Long night ahead of us anyway, we got an agenda and then we have interviews to do for Police Department. So, going with the resolutions for the budget. The first is Resolution Number 10 FY 1920 General Fund Budget. I'll make a, make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Okay, is that a second?
Any discussion?
Roll call.
I don't, I don't have that though. Oh, here it is. Okay, got it.
It's roll call, roll call.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Early?
Yes.
Trustee Miller?
Yes.
Trustee Veloto?
Yes.
Mayor Morandi?
I vote yes. Secondly, we have Resolution Number 11 FY 1920 Water Fund Budget. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Early?
Yes.
Trustee Miller?
Yes.
Trustee Veloto?
Yes.
Mayor Morandi?
Yes. And finally, we have Resolution Number 12 FY 1920 for the Sewer Fund Budget. I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Early?
Yes.
Trustee Miller?
Yes.
Trustee Veloto?
Yes.
Mayor Morandi?
Yes. Okay, thank you, and thank you to Michelle, our Treasurer, for doing the excellent job once again for us. Making everything very clear and for everyone that worked on it, thank you. Next, approve hiring of Nick Delavalle as a Parking Enforcement Officer. Nick, as you know, is the same person last year that we're lucky enough to have interest in coming back this year, so I will gladly make a motion to approve the hiring of Nick as a Parking Enforcement Officer.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next is, which maybe we should have included, was discussion in pay. I think it was thirteen dollars last year an hour, I think we should raise it to, or was it thirteen or fourteen?
It was thirteen last year.
Thirteen. We hire our guys at fifteen, is anyone opposed to hiring them at fifteen?
No.
Not at all, he's just very good.
Okay, I'll make a motion to, to hire Nick at the rate of fifteen dollars per hour.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all, thanks Nick. We'll get, we'll discuss when we can start in a moment. Does anyone have feelings when we can start, or should start?
Once he's available.
I originally told him the first week in June, but I can try to discuss it with him the first week over here, come up earlier.
Yeah, earlier, at least for Memorial Day weekend?
Okay.
At least.
I'll, I'll reach out to him and see if he's available, I'm, I'm sure he will be, but let me double check with him and I'll get back to the board.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you for following up on that too. Interestingly, Lynn had sent us something from, from out west kind of, and there's, what is it, Ohio and Tennessee and a few other, they found that, the appellate court, was it the appellate?
It was the Sixth District of the appellate court has determined that marking tires is unconstitutional, that it, under the Fourth Amendment. So, it's just for that district, however, it's, was, after I read that, it was now splashed all over CNN too. So, I don't know.
That'll be the next thing. You won't be able to put tickets on the cars either.
We'll cross that bridge, you wanna come with it for the fact that it comes to the county.
Well, I just imagine somebody's gonna have seen that article and bring it up at the no support table.
Bring us to court. Okay, next is approved event, Mayor's Park Hop on the Hudson, have all the information in front of us. And John is here, if we need any, any further information. It's, if I get this right or anything wrong, let me know, but it's a one-day event, Saturday, June 29th, from noon to six. They need a Friday setup and a Monday takedown. He has a map here showing where everything's going. It doesn't include the pavilion, right?
I think I asked for pavilion for that area, so I would like to have that included. I think that's how I checked it off in there initially.
Okay, I thought the letter, I thought it said that, let's see.
Just it provides a lot of other avenue over there for games.
In the pavilion area?
Yeah, you know, yeah, but, yeah, but where's comfy, the comfy floor?
What does T stand for on this map? Oh, a tree, right? Okay. I saw tents, but then...
So, you'd be using the pavilion itself and the bathrooms?
Yeah, it was used the pavilion, though it actually had the limestone and pig scale at the factory, as a gaming room, and they're gonna bring in a whole bunch of like knock hockey boards and different games for people to, young, young adults to play.
Did you bring in porta-johns?
Yes.
So, do you need our bathrooms or not?
Oh, yeah, well, those might be just for like, like maybe the brewers, the brewmasters, we'll do like special, that won't be walking to anybody. We're planning on having twenty, twenty porta-johns.
You've got a lot?
Yeah. For the Oktoberfest, we did sixteen, and that was a good comfortable number.
So, did, did Ruth Ann and the, the board give you a total, or no?
They, they did, and I made that deposit, I, I gave half deposit, and that was, and that was received by hand.
And that included the pavilion, what you told Ruth Ann?
I believe.
And what was the total?
Seventeen hundred.
Okay, so it should be nineteen fifty if we're adding the pavilion.
Okay.
And I think that's right, that's a, twelve hundred I think was up to eight hours, two hundred fifty for day for setup and takedown, and then two hundred fifty for additional use of pavilion.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, that'll be fine.
If I'm wrong on that, just, we'll, we'll correct it, but I think that's...
What was the total?
Nineteen hundred and fifty.
And that was a good year.
And then Larry, you'll have to talk to Larry, we'll have to determine what's needed for that?
Yeah, yeah, we were, I spoke with him a while back, we're gonna try to put more.
Okay, just on that Larry, if they just, not in this case, but in any case, what if we don't, what if we can't find people to sign up for that?
I can look elsewhere, elsewhere for private off-duty guys, especially police officers that can, that can probably fit the bill.
Okay.
And have some type of like, a security shirt with a badge on it or something, we can work out something with that.
Okay, that'll be good.
So, like in the future also, or even for this, how much time do you need, leave time would you have to make sure? Because if we don't have lease for like something like this, or maybe it's even bigger, how would we work that?
I'd probably to go outside the Police Department, or even inside the Police Department, I'd like at least, I'd say the minimum a month, but I'd like two months. To try and get our people covered, depending on these people are gonna be at the event, and it's gonna be, you know, a couple hundred people, or twelve hundred people, it all depends, then you gotta figure out how many per security officers you want for as many people as gonna come. And if there's alcohol or not, or whatever, and traffic, and a whole bunch of stuff.
And then I guess the only other thing is Ruth Ann, the certificates, so we need insurance certificates from anybody that's providing games?
Yeah, I've got all that down, met with four insurance companies, so I'll give them an all kind of...
All right, long as we got that covered.
Yeah. Hudson County Health Department, to help the leases see more, so any food vendors have to get like a fifty dollar permit, like a one-day event if they're outside of Hudson County. So, we do have like a few food trucks coming, so they've already been in contact with them.
Okay. All right, I'll make a motion to, to approve the event, June 29th, with setup day before and breakdown two days after, yeah. Or is it the day after?
Monday, seven.
We have a second from Lynn?
Yep.
Any discussion, questions? Good? All in favor?
Aye.
Good luck, John.
Good luck, John.
Thank you much. It'll be a great, it'll be a great house.
Good, all right, I hope so.
Oh, you have a rain day, or?
No.
Okay.
Rain or shine.
Okay.
We'll just have more tents up.
That works. We're supplying umbrellas.
John, are you bringing in dumpsters?
Yeah, I have a couple dumpsters, we're trying to minimize that waste component and stuff, but, yeah.
Where are you gonna put the dumpsters?
I would probably put them over, probably maybe in the existing area where maybe the pavilion is, or I had it inside to get for the Oktoberfest, you know, like quite a baseball field.
Yep, yep.
You know?
Till the tear down, tear down is July 1st, right, Monday?
Monday, yeah. Then we'll do two also, you know, we'll do advertising, if you have, if you do a banner, and we want to put up a banner at the gate or something for you for the parade, we can do that. And if you guys have something you wanna hand out, or if we wanna do some cross-marketing and stuff, that's always open, whatever you wanna do. You know, if you wanna put a July tent up and have a flyer or a ticket that people can take, that's, no, no cost. We're all, also, just so you know, I am also inviting all the non-for-profit tourism businesses in town to come and set up at no cost if they wanna be part of this event and stuff, okay?
Right.
And I've also invited every restaurant almost in town to participate, but because it's outside of their realm of their safe comfort, comfort zone of the kitchen, most have declined. Texas Barbecue is one of the ones local, will be serving up some food.
The one thing, just if we have to contact the, contact the Highway Department when we're gonna start, when we're delivering things, and if it's raining out, or if it's ground is soft, let's make sure we take that into consideration for pulling something in there.
I'd probably like to talk to you more about that, where maybe, maybe a tarper something on the field, I have some ideas to avoid that wet issue.
Okay.
Okay, so, same thing with the goose situation with shell.
Yeah, yeah.
You know?
Okay, yeah. It's on my mind.
Yeah.
Every time I go by.
As long as we can coordinate, like if you don't mind me doing that little grid system that I did, and as long as we can coordinate with any other activities I go on the field, I can always like put it up and take it down, put it up and take it down.
Okay.
Just to keep the geese out of that area for, you know, a couple weeks or something. So, that plastic grid system sort of works, unless we have any other...
All right, we'll, we'll work that out.
Yeah, okay, sounds good.
Okay, next, a question, payment plan from a water resident in Meltonville. I'm not gonna go over the, the... The details on this, or the name, or the letter. I am inclined to agree with it, I believe it's nine, nine hundred dollars might be the total, if a person wants to pay a monthly payment of a hundred dollars to, till they work out to that one. So, I'm, I'll, I'll make a motion to, to approve that payment plan.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. A request to repair sidewalk at 21 Parrot Street, Parrot and Pine Street. Don't know if this has gone through Bugsy yet or not, but we'll have to send that to him.
I think it just came in yesterday.
What's that?
I think it just came in yesterday or today.
So, I'll forward this to, if he hasn't received it. It looks like it's definitely in need, but I'm not sure exactly what's happening there, so, not to pass that along, nothing we can do.
Is that a healthy treat, do you know?
It's half butchered by the way they cut the power lines yet. So, it's like got a crescent shape, and it's a horseshoe chestnut, so it's not pretty. It would have been pretty, but it's not pretty. Okay, next, discussion with Chestnut Ridge residents, who I believe are in the audience, if you'd like to address your concerns.
Good evening, I'm Rena Correy, C-O-R-E-Y, Rena R-E-N-A. I live at 62 Chestnut Street, and we have a couple of Chestnut Ridge residents with us as well. I know there's been a discussion about a traffic light for many years, but now we are at the point where we have a medical center, a friendship center, and a new post office. We have about sixty-four residents in Chestnut Ridge, many of whom are elderly like me. I'm in great shape, I'm gonna be eighty-one in July, and I don't dare cross that 9D to get to any of those buildings. I drive, and believe me, I could use the walk, but it is impossible to cross that street. I'm just gonna quote a couple of statistics in general. There's a 2019 report called Dangerous by Design, and it, it was compiled by the National Complete Streets Coalition backed by AARP and landscape architects, et cetera. And between 2008 and 2017, pedestrian deaths increased by thirty-five point four percent. And of that increase, there is a disproportionate number of deaths among older people. We have people living in Chestnut Ridge who are walking with walkers, who are legally blind, younger people who are disabled. They cannot get across that street just by a crosswalk, and we're gonna have more and more people. So, even though I'm driving, that corner coming around from Chestnut Street and going to the right onto 9D going south is a menace. You've got cars coming out of the driveway from the new medical center. You've got cars coming out of the driveway from the post office. You've got cars coming from the south in Garrison, you have cars coming from the north on 9D, and you've got us coming around Chestnut, you know, on Chestnut Street onto 9D. It's a very dangerous situation, and the pity is of it is that people who do not have cars, like I do, can't even contemplate going to any of these services because there's no way they can get across the street, then they wouldn't dare. So, as you know, when we get older, our cognitive abilities decrease, not mine of course, but... And, you know, we're not as fast on our feet, eyesight is a little bit off, so we desperately need a light. Now, I spoke to the people at the DOT Division Eight, which is our division. They said, "We need a resolution from our village board supporting this traffic light." And if you will do that, then they can begin a traffic study. We need a light, that's not only a light, we need a light that chirps, you know, for people who can't see well, et cetera, et cetera. So, I implore you to make a resolution to get this light, thank you. And I think Larry Burke is gonna speak to that also.
Sorry, where, where were you proposing the light to be?
Well, I am not the traffic engineer, you know. There is a crosswalk now, and I would imagine should be in that area, but it's gotta be convenient for people who cannot walk a great deal to get to the corner and go across the street. I don't know where that light should be, I don't know whether they're gonna make a new path, you know, to, to walk on, I don't know. But it's gotta be to get us across 9D.
What about using the, I'm sorry, I'm not saying no to what you're requesting, but what about using the bus service that the Friendship Center has?
Well, that's, that's wonderful, except that you should not be stopping people from walking. It's, it's a sort of a right to take a walk and cross the street. And if you're saying that we have to take transportation when we're all trying to cut down on carbon imprint, et cetera, et cetera, what could be healthier for older people to be able to take a walk? I mean, it's just silly.
Except crossing 9D.
Well, but if we had a traffic light, they could cross 9D, and it, you know, that's what I wanted to show you. I just got my new car registration in the mail, and with it came this whole little card about pedestrian safety. So, it's on the minds of the New York State Transit, what is it?
Transportation.
Department of Vehicles, thank you, old age. And, stop it. And it says, "Pedestrian Safety, It's No Accident," which is a great slogan. And I know there's a way we can get a light immediately, I've seen it happen when I lived in New York. Somebody gets killed, and immediately you get a traffic light. I am not offering myself. So, anyway, on, on serious note, we really need this resolution.
In the meantime, why don't, why don't the residents at Chestnut Ridge use the bus to get?
There are people who use the bus.
Oh, okay, great.
Oh, definitely, there are people who, but they use the bus because there's no other way they can get across that street. And if they could get across that street, they'd be out in the fresh air walking.
Let me just, the doctors have been there for a long time, before the senior center. How did everybody get back and forth to the doctors all these years?
Well, I guess they had people drive them over, but now you've got a post office which they can't get to. They used to be able to walk down the street and just go to the post office, now they can't get to the post office either. So, it, it's a really, and of course, we didn't have a senior center. And now, there's no way to get, for them to get there walking, and it's, I'd like to be able to walk, you know, on a morning and say, gee, let me take a little walk, it's steps. I don't dare, you know, chance it. Yes.
The crosswalk by Food Town has much greater visibility than the crosswalk at the intersection of Chestnut Street and Route 9D. So, that would be, I'm not suggesting that a person went to Food Town to get across the street, but to go then to the senior center, or the post office, or the medical facilities. But if, if the objective is to go for a walk and crossing 9D is a problem, you could cross, people could cross at that crosswalk.
I see you walking everywhere.
Yes.
I see you, I'm in my car, and I see you walking everywhere, and I say, "This woman walks everywhere." But not everybody is as energetic as you are. I mean, I really can't see some of our people walking with walkers down to the Food Town, crossing across the street, and going back up.
I hope the people who are walkers aren't gonna go across the street and up the hill.
Well, but...
That might be a little difficult also.
That hill is a killer.
But they, but the post office isn't too bad at the hill, you know.
Well, that's, that's if you walk south on 9D.
Yeah.
And then go up that street as opposed to the one that is...
I, I just wanna, you know, and I just have to go there. I was involved in the whole planning for that bar field, and as you may or may not recall, and sure, surely, it's because she was involved in the whole thing, when our planning board was discussing all this issues and were very concerned, when our, when the, our planning board was pressured by the seniors to just get it done, get it done, not giving our planning board enough time to do stuff. Things they wanted to do, they were pressured, you know, not to do or not to look into. DOT immediately, DOT did, did a, did a study already, they did a study for that project. They're the ones that did a study, they said, "This is what's gonna happen." You know, they knew exactly what was gonna happen, it was gonna be the Friendship Center, and they were gonna have the, they were gonna have the doctors' offices, they were gonna have all those apartment buildings, and they're the ones that looked at that plan, and they said, "This is fine. This is what you need here, you need to have this type of circulation in that project," and there were no lights recommended at the time.
Well...
Now, that's only three weeks, that's only three years maybe ago that that study was done. Stuff didn't change, that plan hasn't changed, so I would be interested to see why DOT has changed their mind in a few years. And I'd like to also just remind you that the seniors were rallied to come down here and to put pressure to just get it done. And they did not allow our planning board what I think was sufficient time, or giving them enough breathing room to keep, to actually do their, you know, to...
Due diligence.
Exactly.
Well...
And, and that's not the only thing, it's kind of, it's not gonna be just the red light, wait till the apartments are there, and the seniors can't go over there and drive there and find a place to park. And wait, wait till a number of different things as far as the traffic happens.
Well, if they can walk, they don't have to find a place to park.
They're not gonna walk, please. They're not, the percentage of the seniors...
I'm certainly going to walk.
Well, that might be one or two people, but I will guarantee you...
It isn't one or two people, because there are people who walk now with walkers to Food Town and back.
And how many people drive up there?
I don't know, I don't keep account, but I can tell you...
Well, I think it's a significant amount of people that drive.
But I think you're mixing apples and oranges, because I think the necessity for a friendship center, a senior center, or whatever we wanna call it, has really nothing to do with the traffic light. One is one, and one is the other.
No, it has everything, it has, what we need a traffic light for is because this plan was not well thought out because of DOT.
That may be, but that's where we are now, isn't it?
Yeah, so now the seniors are gonna come here, and they're gonna say, "Please do this for us." When they came down and harassed the people that were in my administration...
Well, they can be threatening, I know. I mean, they are a dangerous group, and I understand that we're feared.
I agree, they aren't, they're a very powerful group, and you can ask any politician...
Wait, wait, I'm only four foot nine, let me stand up a little, I'm getting four ten.
Size matters, doesn't matter when it comes to that.
Size doesn't matter.
No, it doesn't.
Quote the mayor, size doesn't matter.
Yeah, you can vote me on that.
Well, I think I've said what I have to say.
I think one of the most powerful blocks that there are in, in our politics today are the seniors. And if you can ask any politician, really, you don't...
I had no idea.
Well, I guess you don't vote or watch any politics on any...
I vote, believe me, but I didn't know I was that powerful. So, if I am, get that traffic light resolution done tonight.
I think you should go to DOT and ask DOT to get it done, it's the state road, and it's...
This is who is asking for the resolution. They want a resolution from the village, and will not do a traffic study without that resolution. I have the person to whom it should be sent, Ed Goff, the Regional Traffic Engineer, New York State DOT Division Eight for Burnett Boulevard, Poughkeepsie. So, that's...
What is the resolution supposed to...
The resolution is to say that the village is in accord with the desirability and necessity for a traffic light across 9D.
Can I just jump in, I think, I'm gonna jump into Larry in the back there who has already spoken, has already spoken to the DOT number, number of times on this traffic situation.
Um, yeah, when it first came up to me a couple of months ago, I went over to the DOT meeting with, actually, I was asked to go over also with Barbara Scutimara, I was dealing with her before, when she was, when she was our representative, and now I'm dealing with Nancy Montgomery. I was asked to go over, and I explained to them what was going on, and what that, we, what the seniors were requesting at Chestnut Ridge with the new Friendship Center and the situation. They said that they needed a resolution done already, and I, they needed a resolution done, and I explained to them that something of that caliber was done before the place was built, the Friendship Center, stuff like that. So, supposedly it was already done from my knowledge. So, they agreed to look at it, I asked them about a light, and they pretty much, I'm not gonna say they shot me down about the light, but they said, "It's very hard to get the traffic light on a state road like that." They suggested possibly that they'll be able to look into like a flashing yellow light, and if you're going to cross, you would press the button, it would go from yellow to red. So, when the vehicles coming into the village, either north or south, it would turn red, they'd have to stop, so you'd have the crosswalk and the people...
That's good.
The people that walk across. That probably would be a better chance of getting that than a regular traffic light itself.
Right, I don't know the, you know, parameters of what kind of a signal, but whatever will work and whatever they will do is fine.
Yeah, they said just, just to break ground and possibly putting any light whatsoever, you're talking about a hundred thousand dollars.
So, they said that we've already presented a resolution three or four years ago before this was built.
I, I mentioned that to them, they have not gotten, they have not gotten back to me, and I have not been back over for a meeting, they meet every two months. I will request another, or another audience with them on their next meeting, when they have it. I know Chef Langley's on the board, there's a few other people that are on the board from the area, but they did state that it is a state road, and it's extremely hard to put, and they don't wanna stop the flow of traffic period. That, that's what they were telling me, and they'd have to do a big study on it. And looking at that road specifically, coming into the village, coming downhill for vehicles, it, it's hard to put it anywhere. The only place I would think that they could put it would be, would be the one down by Food Town now. Maybe, and again, maybe, the one, the crosswalk that's right at the end of Chestnut Ridge.
The crosswalk that's there.
That would be the closest one to get over there.
That would be the spot to do it, at that crosswalk.
But I, I will go back to them again on their next meeting, I, hopefully, there, there's one more meeting before, then they do the summer break.
So, you will keep the board apprised as to what...
I will, I will keep the Chestnut Ridge community apprised, and I will also...
He's afraid of us too.
I will, I will keep the board...
So, as it turns out, there are no sidewalks on that side of the road. On that Chestnut, on that side of Chestnut Street, there are no sidewalks. So, if the intention is to make the crosswalk safer across Route 9D, the people using that would be walking on road beds, um...
Well, if you come down Chestnut Street, right where, there's like a rock there and a sign, that's where, that would be the closest one.
With Joe Percicello's...
So, there is, there is a sidewalk there to come down, then they'd have to walk, they have, you have to make a crosswalk going, going across over to the, to almost the entrance to the medical...
So, you're talking about a new crosswalk, because there's already a crosswalk there.
Right, well, I would use, I would think to use that one, to me, that would be, so they wouldn't have to walk all the way down to Food Town.
No, 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 I'm not talking the Food Town crosswalk, there's a crosswalk, there's a crosswalk...
Correct.
Right, but nobody can get across it, it's my...
That would probably be the best bet, if anything was gonna happen, that would probably be the best bet for people in Chestnut Ridge not to walk all the way down right at that.
Yeah, but where's the sidewalk there, Larry?
If you walk down Chestnut, the sidewalk is right on the side of Chestnut Ridge, if you walk down, right there.
You know where the Joe Percicello monument is?
You're coming, if you're coming north on Chestnut Ridge from 9D, when you come around the facility, it's on the right-hand side. Right opposite the museum.
I thought, and we're right here.
Right opposite the museum.
Now, that's also probably one of the widest portions of Route 9D.
Yep.
So, if the objective is to get people across as quickly as possible, choosing the widest section of 9D would, would not...
Ultimately, it's not gonna be up to us, to be honest with you, whatever we tell the DOT, they're gonna go by their own plan. So, they're gonna decide what's safer, what's easier, what, what's gonna... So they're gonna decide what's safer, what's easier, what, what's gonna fit, they're gonna tell us what is good.
And we already have a flashing light there, just south of that, there's a flashing light, and the sign's about pedestrians. And the traffic doesn't pay any attention to that. Uh, that turn is also somewhat, um, you don't have good line of sight at that turn?
Nope, that's why the best, the really best place for it, realistically, uh, talking as the DOT would say, go down to Food Town, where they have enough time to stop, but again, you know, you have to walk all the way down to Food Town, go across, go all the way back up.
They can't go down to Food Town, there's no sidewalk, and you'd have to walk across the park.
Exactly, and the next one, uh, south of that would be right in front of Downey's, which you really can't, because you're coming over a bridge.
Oh, that's a disaster.
They're coming, they're coming into the building, that's, that's too fast, there's no way to put a light down. So just from my point of view, that would be the only place, but again, DOT's not gonna listen to me, they're not gonna listen to us, they're gonna say, "This is where we think it needs to go for the traffic."
I would like to get up the information for the person to contact, and I will contact them personally.
Are you talking about the DOT, oh, we're talking about me?
You just quoted the name, the address.
Oh, I, of course, I will give it to you, because I figured somebody would ask me for that, there you go.
Do we, do you have a number by any chance?
Telephone number, I have it in my computer.
Okay, with that?
I'll, I'll give it to you tomorrow.
Okay, or you can forward, send it to Jeff, the clerk?
Okay, I will do that.
Okay, great, all right, we'll follow up.
Thank you, very much.
Uh, next is a resolution, uh, yeah, resolution oh eight dash two oh nineteen, establishing water rent for Friendship Center. We're on a Friendship Center kick tonight, um, theme. Uh, anyway, Marie, you wanna take this, we, uh, we bounced back and forth, we tabled this and.
The, um, village code, uh, identifies a special assessment, um, for this type of structure. Um, there are five bathrooms in, sorry, there are five restrooms in the Friendship Center, containing multiple stalls in the restrooms. So my recommendation is five, uh, units for that, and the kitchen, there's one kitchen with four sinks. Uh, so let's say that's one, so the recommendation is six units, six water units, six water rents. So I make a motion to adopt resolution number eight dash two zero one nine.
I'll second, good. I'll second, any discussion? Vocal?
Uh, trustee Early?
Yes.
Trustee Miller?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes, sir.
Trustee Valotto?
Yes.
Mayor Mirandi?
Yes.
Got it.
Uh, Lynn, you're up, all right, we missed something?
Doc side?
Sorry, sorry, I missed the most important, the Doc Side Park user agreement.
Are you planning to read it?
Yes, you can, well, Marie, I'm trying to do it by memory.
At this point, I probably can't, but it's almost like letters and numbers didn't jump. I think everyone has seen, let me take this.
Yes, definitely.
I sent everyone, I believe, yet late yesterday, the final versions of the Doc Side Park user guide and application, um, after Marie and I have, have tweaked through it about fifty thousand times. At this point, I would hope that everyone's taken a look, if there's no comment on it, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Doc Side Park application, as is, uh, the one in front of you tonight, for use, uh, for anyone who wants to rent or use Doc Side Park in any way or form.
Second?
Any discussion? I would just like to thank, uh, Fran for, uh, really, it was a rough draft, kind of, or, or, put most, everything we could together, and then like had to tweak it forever, so Fran has done an incredible amount of drafting, redrafting, Marie's made a lot of edits, and, uh, Lynn has chimed in, and, and we've changed a number of things from her experiences in catering, so thank you all for that.
And Stephanie.
And also my wife, who, uh, helped with the, uh, the actual contract in the back, so, uh, thank you all. A lot of your time on this, um, this is kind of, I think it'll be a living document, and Stephanie will probably be having changes made to it, but, uh, I think it, it's good to have it going, so, um.
We have the motion, and it's my second.
We have a second, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Lynn?
Okay, I make a motion to approve batch number five zero six nine, for a total amount of thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred and ninety dollars and eight cents.
I'll second that, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Uh, next trustee, uh, monthly, uh, meeting minutes, four nine nineteen, I'll make a motion to approve.
I will second.
Discussion?
Uh, yeah, I was not present at the meeting, uh, however, uh, there are a couple of typos, um, under Building Department.
I thought Jeff had picked those up already.
Pardon me?
I saw your note, I thought Jeff had picked those up.
No, they're not in there, I'll give them to him tomorrow.
Yeah.
Okay, under Building Department, the, um, fifth from the bottom and the fourth from the bottom should be plural, to referrals plural, and the W should be W. I'll give it to Jeff.
On the report of mayor and trustees, there's a question mark in the middle of the sentence, doesn't belong.
Good eye.
Picking up the game.
Where's that, Steve?
Uh, for the, excuse me, I quit smoking. Report the trustees and the mayor, there's only one sentence there. Trustee replaced the question mark structural beam.
Oh, yeah, oh, okay. Uh, the, did you replace it?
Uh, yes.
Okay, was there anything else that had to be done?
Yeah, it's, it's not that important a detail, it's just there shouldn't be a question mark in the middle of the sentence.
Okay.
Okay.
So, uh, do you wanna make a motion to, as a member?
Yes, make a motion to accept the trustee's monthly meeting, uh, minutes four nine nineteen with those minor adjustments.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, excuse my, I, I, I can't vote on this one.
And I will record that fact.
You go, Michael.
Um, anything from the audience before we go, we're going into executive session after this, um, uh, discuss the employment history. Um, so, uh, nothing, there will be no actions taken after that, but after the, uh, session, we will, uh, adjourn. If anyone have anything now?
Yep, I have, I have something, um, just noticed, um, at the end of Campbell Avenue, all the way at the end, um, I guess somebody's been using the property up above for something for, um, um, uh, rub, not rubbish, uh, but, um, leaves, brush. It's, it's a monster mound, I don't know if you've seen it.
You're talking about the end of Benedict Street?
The end of Benedict Street, and I have a picture of a big mound at one second, for one second being up there, and then later on, it's, uh, down the hill.
That's where our, that's village property that we bring our, we bring everything to.
Well, it's, you know, it's coming over and it's coming down almost on the Campbell Ave, and you know, they got some large logs that are now a couple of feet, I just. It seems like you're, we're asking for some trouble in there with that big mound, so that's not, that's not, that's doing that.
I think we had a slide there before, but I, I think they're aware of that.
You can check it out, though.
That's property, that's our property also.
Oh, okay, okay, well, it's just really getting pretty massive.
I haven't seen it, I'll, I'll take a look.
Yeah, if you could just go down the end of Campbell and see how, how high it is, how far it's come out, it's.
Probably afraid to go farther with it, okay, I'll check it out.
Okay.
But that is our pro, that's where they bring everything.
All right.
We are probably running out of room.
Oh.
Anything else?
I actually have a quick question.
Yes.
Uh, and I don't know, it should be directed elsewhere, that's fine. Um, so we live on thirteen Church Street, um, and the stream is behind our home. How do we find out, who do we go to in terms of, uh, we have a gate up there and, uh, that keeps us, you know, the boundary. Are we allowed to remove that gate?
There's a gate between your property and the, and the stream, yeah?
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know.
Where, who do I say?
I think the, uh, I think it's the problem, the, the stream is.
The stream is not owned by the village.
Not owned by the village.
Do you have a, um, survey?
No.
You don't have a survey of your property?
Oh, yes, we probably do, I have, I haven't seen it.
Okay, and, and so, that should, that should identify whether the gate is on your property.
Yeah.
Or the gate is in, uh, Brook. So if it's on your property, you can remove it, seems to me.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Okay.
Which, which house is that, is that, um, thirteen?
It used to be thirteen Church Street.
Is that Mackey's old house, or is it the next?
Um, no.
With the, the long roof on it?
Yes.
Next door to Mackey's old house, okay. 'Cause I know he built a lot of stuff behind there, back when he lived there, Mackey, the, the house next door that he held on, but. I wasn't sure if you, if you bought that one.
The gentleman who passed away?
Yeah.
Yes.
Mackey, yeah, he built all kinds of stuff behind his house, around the stream and everything. I didn't know if it was your, your next door, so, never mind. I could've answered your question, 'cause it was probably him that did.
Okay, I'll take a look at the document.
I'm not sure who actually owned the stream, because I know that the property we're looking at, uh, cutting a tree down at the very end, and I think the, the village actually cut that tree down, the locust at the other Dar's house, and that was because her, I think the property might, might end before the stream.
The stream has been.
I don't know who it's owned by, but.
A problem, it's been problematic, it is not a recognized water course by the state of New York. The, uh, stream, of course, goes through Spring Brook, and the village has said, it's Spring Brook's problem.
Right, yeah. As far as, I think you can take it down, I.
Yeah, I'll take a look at the survey and see what starts there.
Okay. Just don't block the stream.
Yes, it's not blocking the stream.
It's happened before. Anything else?
Thank you very much.
Oh, you're welcome.
Thank you.
We'll follow up and see what happens. Make a motion to go into executive session, see if there's a discussion. History in particular. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm gonna drink a water while, while we're pausing some of our most heated water.
Oh, yeah. Thanks. You're welcome, no discussion.
Good night, Doug.
Will one of the trustees let me know when you exited, and who made the motion, who seconded, and what time, et cetera, et cetera?